He was standing by the highway with a sign that just said, "Mother." And he heard a driver coming about a half a mile away. And he held the sign up higher so no distance, so it would miss it. It was ten degrees. He's a caller down by Boulder Dam that day. He was raised up in Milwaukee, though he never was that famous. He was just a road musician to the taverns he would go. Singing songs about the rambling, laughing girls and gambling. How the world fell on his shoulders back in Boulder, I don't know. It was out in Arizona that he heard the lady listening to each word that he was saying, to each line that he would write. So he sat down by her table. They talked about the weather, ninety-eight point six and rising down by Boulder Dam that night. And she told him she would take him for a ride in the morning sun. Back in Boulder, he had told her, I don't know when, I had a better friend. Now he's traded off his mark, but his troubles are not over. For his feet are almost frozen and the sun is sinking low. Won't you listen to me, brother? If you've ever loved your mother, please pull out on the shoulder if you're going Milwaukee way. It's ten degrees and getting colder down by Boulder Dam today. Never had much to say, travel alone.
Seven oh one, we're going to begin the meeting. We started at six thirty with the warrant, we paid the bills. So first order of business, did you guys get a chance to see my markup of the meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, so it looked good to me.
You guys were okay with that?
Yes.
Any other markup?
Nope.
I think you caught everything.
Well, Steve's now, Anne is busy typing out a motion.
Thank you.
And second.
Appreciate that.
So.
You gotta type the minutes.
That's the seven oh two, and we have Tom Ward here to talk about an update from the Indian Place Committee.
Yeah, okay, so I just wanted to make sure the select board was aware that we did get the first twenty thousand dollars from the Maine Health Access Foundation. And that's been deposited at the bank, and I hope Rachel did credit it to the right. She was struggling with the clues, but. So one thing just to remember is that part of the terms of that grant, ten percent of it just goes to the town, where general and administrative expenses. So two thousand dollars comes right out of that twenty thousand and goes to the town. It doesn't go to Agent Place, okay? The remaining eighteen thousand supports our efforts the rest of this year. So you say, what are, what is that? And where the committee has ended up is that we want to start a respite adult day program, not a medical model which requires licensing and a whole bunch of compliance with federal and state regulations, but a non-medical model. And so in the original grant application, we had postulated hiring another social worker to direct that program. But we have been doing research, talking to the programs that are running in Hollowell and Gardner and elsewhere. And for the non-medical model, you don't need that. You, I mean, in fact, it's probably better not to have a nurse because that then suggests to the feds that you are a medical program. And one of the issues there is, once you do become medical and you have all the medical, there are insurance issues and there is a lot related to that, there's the liability because you're postulating a drop in care, okay? We're not. It's only a socializing. It's meant to provide respite, probably half or more. Typically, the programs will have six to eight to ten people there, that is clients. And more than half of them will have some form of Alzheimer's or dementia. It might be still relatively mild. The other half may simply have issues that are preventing them from socializing. So what we're trying to do is build a program around about six hours in length, five to six hours, with games and activities, which we still have to develop. We're trying to learn from these other programs, and lunch, built around the lunch. So on Wednesday, I'm meeting with the community center board because they've already expressed a willingness to have a program there. In the grant application, or not the grant application, but the subsequent work we've done with the Maine Health Access Foundation, we've talked about eventually having this kind of program in Vianna, maybe at the range. And then one day a week at Starling Hall, assuming, because Starling Hall, the kitchen now works and they have heat. So, but that still needs to be worked out, okay? And the Maine Health Access Foundation is being very good about not pushing us to go too fast. And we're not talking about starting up until the second quarter. So what we're primarily trying to do now is dimensionalize the program and then put together a job description, which I hope I can come back to you with late February or early March. Then we'll advertise the position. We can think of a couple of people, one in Mount Vernon, one in Vianna, who have experience in caring for elderly people. And not that those specific people are who we might hire, but people like those people, rather than paying for a nurse or paying for a licensed social worker, if you see what I mean. We're also thinking, because February for Alex is about to start. It's being started with red drawstring burlap bags that are going to go to sixty-seven of the households on our list of seventy-five something. People sixty-five and older, which could be, could be me, but I'm not one of them, anyway. And those, those bags will have puzzles and games. Carol Fuller has worked on a crossword puzzle where all the clues are in Mount Vernon, in Vianna, specific. And the answers, you know, like, whatever it is, one thousand two hundred feet, the highest mountain in what, in Kennebec County? Which you all probably know, don't give it away. Anyway, so that's, so the, that bag will be distributed now this storm on Friday and they complicate things, but certainly by the beginning of next week. And it will have the schedule of events, because we have three snowshoeing tracks, easy, moderate, a little harder. The easy one is the Ezra Smith Wildlife, where they don't go down over the boardwalk, but just go up to the right. The second, the moderate is Minihawk, and the more difficult is up from the Leighton's Meadow on Smoobville Trail forty-one A, which I do with others all the time. And then we're going to have a skating party. That's why, kudos to Josh Neptune, to Todd Dunn, to Donald Horn and others who created the three ice skating grounds. Because, and their, their target, the date is the twentieth of February for the skating party. And Kirsten Hack and the Girl Scouts are helping to do that, to also be a little book signing thing going in the front of the community center, not inside the community center. There's also a sledding party scheduled, there's some chair yoga on video, Zoom. There, the people that, well Cheryl Hell Rains' group that used to do the, you know, not the current one, but the previous one that used to do during the Storful Society plays. They have, Mark has come up with some of the tapes of the old performances. So a different one will be posted online each week so people can watch them. So there are a whole bunch of different things, but none of them indoors or in law, okay? But part of what we're trying to do is spread the word and ask for volunteers because some of the people who are willing, like even now, some people step forward to bake cookies for, to put in these bags, are also people who probably would benefit from being in this respite day program. And actually, that's one of the ideas about lunch, is that lunch is a very therapeutic, comforting sort of thing to do with supervision, assemble sandwiches and so on and so on. It's something that goes back in time in people's minds, and so that's part of what we want to do. So we're trying to sort of make a connection between February frolics and we're eventually doing this program. So I hope that makes sense to you, that's where we are right now.
It all sounds awesome, Tom.
The news weather, we're doing a combined January, February, so we have until, no, combined February, March. I'm not sure when we're going to try to put it out, but you have a little bit of time if you want to, you know, come up with a word for that.
Well, she, I think Carol Fuller has a poster, which she's done. And to be quite honest, I am happy Carol and Alice and Mary Ann are full of beans, and I've been happy to let them take the lead on February frolics. I mean, I've been working with them, but. And on the other program, on the, on the respite adult day program, it's really Dan Onion and Kat Ross and Lori Rodriguez are licensed social worker. Joe Tibby has had, you know, she's been trying to focus on taking care of Joe Tibby in this time. But, but, so that's where we are. So, you know, some, in a month. The job description, and it's not going to be like the one we did before for the licensed clinical social worker that we ended up hiring. We do expect her to keep on working with us because part of the reasoning for having a respite adult day program is to see people and if necessary, to take them in with a licensed clinical social worker and get them working on the issues that they have. And we're also trying to coordinate with NDN because we want to be able, some of the people who have mobility issues, we want to be able to get them out of their houses into this program because otherwise, they're pretty much trapped in that house. And we want to get them out. And there are some drivers and some vehicles that NDN has that can handle wheelchairs. So, and not all of us are experienced in helping people who are confined to a wheelchair in and out of a vehicle. I've done it, but, you know, it's not good, I'm not good at it, so.
Tom, we also have quite a few musicians in the town, not professional musicians, but. And from my experience with my mother, music could be a great part of the day, day program.
Yeah, I think that Lori is trying to come up with some of the different activities or elements of the program based on what's worked elsewhere. There are, and, and we've also asked, it was in the budget, that we could, I mean, part of the money could be used for a consultant. Originally, we were thinking about that money largely in terms of the organizational issues going forward to move from being a program of the town of Mount Vernon to being a three-town program with all three towns and some sort of cooperative body that managed it. But that's probably next year, when we get thirty thousand dollars, right? So, so this year, I think, we have asked the Maine Health Access Foundation if they could recommend someone who would be knowledgeable about programs elsewhere in the state and what the elements of them are and what the watchouts are that we want to avoid. They're still doing that, we haven't heard from them, so we're sort of going forward as best we can. And, and certainly, the woman in Gardner has been extraordinarily helpful. But a lot of those programs started like ours, and then they migrated to become medical model programs. Because that's a way to financially sustain it. But on, the problem is, then you, you incur a lot of additional costs in order to meet government regulations about the quality of care, all the rest. So I think we're not going to want to go down that road as long as there are, because a lot of those programs are really associated with a life care facility that's right there or a medical facility that's right there, so that there's the backup if there are issues. So for example, and then I'll shut up, we, so people might bring their pills, the prescriptions, to the program because it's, there's lunch, and sometimes people take their pills at lunchtime. The non-medical model, you cannot give someone a pill. You can remind them to take their pill, but you cannot give them the pill. That's, that's one of the differences, right? So it's still on them to, once they're reminded, to take the pill. And if they don't take the pill, well, it's not a medical program. And it wasn't your responsibility to give them the pill. So I hope that all makes sense, that's sort of where we are right now, and so, I'll give you a poster.
So one question, the grant money has come in, and you're aware of the set aside for administrative. And Tom, the set aside for the administrative cost, that's for being able to deal with the invoicing billing and.
Well, they just said that they were willing to have it be up to ten percent, and we just put it in at ten percent. And we figured, yeah, Carrie does have to, she has to account for the money, and if we get audited, she has to be able to.
So we'll have to account for it if we're not using all that, and, you know, towards the end of it, we'll certainly use it.
It is a two-year, oh no, you don't have to account for your ten percent.
We don't.
No, that is just off the top to the town, and it's in the grant, that the town gets ten percent. That's just flat, you don't have to explain that. The other eighteen thousand, we do have to, okay? And that would probably be hourly payments for the contract supervisor of the program on a forward-going basis. We haven't used all the money yet from the previous grant that was paying for the licensed clinical social worker, but at some point, we'll need to tap this new grant for that, and it's allowed, it's in the budget. Food for lunch, the cleaning, the community center is happy to forego the usage fee, but we'll still pay the cleaning fee. Again, we're not talking about probably going in there until second quarter, by which time we hope that COVID is not as much of an issue as it is now. If COVID's still an issue, we'll delay it until later in the year. We're not going to shoot ourselves in the foot.
Do we have to spend that money by the end of?
No, it's a two-year grant. So we do have to spend the money by the end of twenty twenty-three. And we get another thirty thousand in December, which is meant for next year. So we'll have to get smart. I, I think that the general feeling at the foundation and also Dan Onion, I don't mean to speak for him, is it's better for us to move like this, go slowly at first and find our way. And then when we have a day that works, you know, we replicate it. And so you can just imagine how that works if you move from having one day to two, to three, to four. We don't even have to get to five days, or even four, we could end up just having three days. The issue that we have is that it was a grant application that said we wanted to serve Vianna and Fayette as well as Mount Vernon, and the chair of the select board in Vianna wrote a letter and supported it, and the town manager of Fayette wrote a letter and supported it. So we want to, at the end of the two years, have something like the dams committee or, you know, there are other examples where Mount Vernon is cooperating with other towns nearby. Or maybe we spin off something like NDN, you know, got spun off and do its own five oh one C three. But we don't know that yet, we don't know how to handle it yet. That's sort of that, okay?
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks for all the great work, very, very exciting.
All right, so. Later on the Zoom, and he's going to update us with some latest info and kind of a request to participate. So, who are you going to show it?
Hi, thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
We can.
Great, well, thank you for having me. I had been in touch with Paul, and I believe Jessperson's been in touch with Aaron in the last week. And what we're looking for is the town's participation and a steering committee over the next couple of months with respect to looking at a long pond, what we call a long pond management plan. And what that is about is, two years ago, in the fall of twenty twenty, there was a survey done on long pond, around long pond watershed, looking for erosion issues that might affect water quality. So a list of survey properties was put together, and, and the erosion issues were ranked according to severity. So some were, you know, low impact and some were fairly high impact. And that includes private properties as well as public properties like town roads. So again, there's a list in Belgrade, Rome, and Mount Vernon of properties that were visited that are made up part of the survey list. And so the, the process is the following. The idea is to get state money and federal money to fix erosion issues that affect water quality. So in order to protect the long pond or, you know, Parker Pond or any of the ponds, reducing erosion is part of the answer to doing that. And, and that's why this survey is done to identify problems. And a plan is put together to look at ways that the problems can be fixed, whether that is, you know, rebuilding a camp road, rebuilding a driveway, rebuilding a town road. If any of those are causing issues with erosion runoff and it getting into a stream and therefore into a lake, those are the kind of properties that made it on the list. So again, long story short is, a survey was done in twenty twenty. We're hoping to do a plan over the next couple of months, and we're looking for participation from the town of Mount Vernon, the town of Rome, the town of Belgrade, in addition to the Lake Association groups primarily. Main DEP participates in that as well because they help provide the funding. And we often ask business people to participate in it. We're doing one, for example, over on North Pond. We've asked Pine Tree Camp to be part of the steering committee as well. So it's not just the government folks and the Lake Association folks. We're hoping to have a wider community impact. Finally, what happens if you have a plan, you're allowed to apply for state money to fix the, the problems. And normally, the grants are about a hundred thousand dollars for about two years of work. And in long pond, we'd be trying to spread the money between Mount Vernon, Belgrade, and Rome. And again, we do the private roads as well as the town roads, if there are any town roads that need, you know, help. And we would want to work, and we've done this, for example, in Rome where we had some money in the last couple of years. We've worked with the road commissioner in Rome to, you know, work on two or three of the town roads to, again, try to fix problems. So the, the goal of the survey and the planning and the grant is to fix your erosion issues around the watershed. And ultimately, the goal is to, is to make sure that water quality is maintained, that it doesn't deteriorate. There's a fair amount of pressure, which you all probably know, on the lakes in terms of runoff development. And even the changing climate is heating up lakes for longer periods of time. And, and in North Pond, that's starting to cause algae blooms. And we want to avoid that in Mount Vernon lakes for sure, if at all possible. So one of the things we can actually do is, you know, fix erosion problems. Other things can sometimes be tougher, like septic systems or, you know, atmospheric. Some of it, you know, falls out of the sky. So there's, there's certain natural inputs that are hard to control. The inputs like, you know, bad roads are things that we can control, and, and then there's money to do it. So that's, I've worked with Seven Lakes Alliance, as well as being a resident of the town. So Seven Lakes Alliance used to be called Belgrade Regional Conservation, we're based right in Belgrade. And, and the watershed of the Belgrade Lakes, which includes obviously long pond, is part of where we do business. We also are in the land conservation business and in the invasive plant business in addition to the erosion control business, so to speak. Anyway, I, what we really like is somebody from the town, either a selectman or somebody from the planning board, or maybe the appeals board, or to represent the town on this steering committee that is looking at the planning. And the, the workload for the job is, again, over the next two months. A couple of us are writing the, the plan itself, but we're asking for people to come to probably two steering committee meetings, one in a couple of weeks and one towards the end of the, the two-month period. Review the, review the plan, take a look at it, comment on it. Some of the actions in the plan involve erosion control, but some of the actions look at things like town ordinances to make sure that they protect the water quality for the town, things like that. So we'd like the town to participate in that, take a look at some of the recommendations, you know, help modify or. you know, help modify or edit those recommendations. And ultimately what we'd like to do is then go after some erosion control grant money for next year, 2023. And by writing the plan this year, we're eligible to apply for that grant money for next year and, and try to, you know, work with you to identify roads that you want to work on over the next couple of years. These grants are usually good for about two years. Again, it's about 50,000 a year that we can probably get once we write the plan. And again, we have to spread it among the three towns in the Long Pond Watershed. We're trying to do these same kind of grants and are doing these same kind of grants for Meselonski and for Gray Pond. So I know some of the town is in the Meselonski Watershed, so we're hoping to do a similar project over on Meselonski coming up for next year as well. So again, if there's roads in town that you have on your list of, to, to, to work on, hopefully this grant money can help get things done, you know, either better or faster or, or both. So that's my goal and do you have any questions? I provided Paul some information, the, the new survey that was done a couple of years ago and the old management plan from 2009. So, you know, those documents are definitely available to be shared with the community. And if you have any questions, either about the, the process or about participating on the committee, I'm happy to try to answer your questions.
Oh, first question, Charlie, when is the kickoff meeting? Because if we can kind of figure out who a good member might be and nominate them, see if they'll join the committee and then appoint them and, you know, whatever, it might, might take several weeks or whatever, but what is your timeline?
We had an organizing meeting a week ago. So the timeline is, so time, the next two to three weeks, we'll schedule a second meeting to take a look at the initial data. The first thing that we are doing is asking the science folks to just update the, the reports that they've been doing. Between Main DEP and Colby and Seven Lakes, we've been doing a lot of water quality analysis the last 10 years and we want to look at that data and look at trends in the lake. We believe the 40-year trend is negative, but the last 10-year trend for Long Pond looks pretty stable, which is good news. So we're hoping to maintain that stability in, in spite of ongoing developments and in spite of, you know, hotter summers, longer summers, possibly more runoff from rain events. But to, to get to your question, I expect we'd have another meeting in probably two to three weeks and then a, a meeting in mid-October, sorry, mid-March to, to review the, review the plan and, and kind of take the next step, which would be sort of planning for applying for those, those grants for next year.
I'll just say, Jen, Jen reached out to me the other day and asked if I would represent Mount Vernon, which I'm happy to do, though I don't want to step on her knee toes if someone else is.
I don't know. It sounds like she's nominating herself. I think, I think we have a candidate.
Happy to have you, Anna, is just sitting here, ready to jump in and I would welcome your participation, so.
So tell us again the name of the committee, the steering committee.
Sure, it's, it's a mouthful, it's Long Pond Watershed Based Management Plan Steering Committee.
You might have to say that again, Anna's taking notes.
I'm multitasking over here, Charlie. I think I got it.
All right.
Yes, it's that no watershed-based, the, the whole idea there is they're looking at fixing things in the watershed, which is all the land surrounding the lake. And they're, and they're usually focusing on dirt because you can see it and it's, you know, there's things to do that you could actually fix problems.
Yeah, makes sense.
Carl Hill Road.
I'm gonna make a motion and Anna, you're gonna have to fill in the long name, but I'm gonna nominate Anna to be the Town Representative of the Long Pond Watershed Based.
Management Plan.
Management Plan Steering Committee, it's written there. That was the motion, Bob. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? All right, you have your member. Yeah. One, that went so easy.
Thank you, Paul. I, I like to call it Long Pond Plan, if you can, so.
I got those, the files from you there Thursday, Friday, whatever it was, and I, I failed to forward them on, but I'll do that tonight, see you guys. And I, I didn't really look at them, to be honest with you, Charlie, yet, but is that appropriate for us to put on the town website as well?
That's fine. And, and I think it's, one of the things we are planning to do is to have a public meeting as part of the process in about a month. And I'll, I'll coordinate that with Anna and you, just to, you know, so it's on the calendar. Pick a day, right around the beginning of early March, which is around when we'll have the draft plan ready to go. And, and that's, that's the plan, is to have that public meeting, any public comment, be able to include that in the final draft of the plan. We're planning to get it over to DEP for their review about mid-March.
Sounds good.
Have their review by the end of March.
Awesome.
Yep.
Any other questions for Charlie? Charlie did a good job, thank you.
Just let me know, Charlie, how.
You know how to get.
How it's all coming together, yeah. You know how to reach me.
And well, and when we start planning for, you know, running a grant for next year, one of the things we'll be doing is going around, you know, looking at the roads this spring. So, you know, if you want to do that together or you want me to do that with the Road Commissioner or however we want to go about that, that would be normally what we do is we identify some roads that are good candidates for the money and then we, you know, write the grant and identify half a dozen projects that we can, you know, hit the ground running.
That sounds great, yeah.
Awesome. Hey, hey, one, one final question, Charlie. What if Castle Island, which is a state maintained road, has, you know, any kind of significant issues? What kind of a player would they be?
They, they're, they're good candidates for projects. I have worked with DOT before on, you know, state roads through towns. I worked on the one, I think it was Route 137 in Spithill. It takes having somebody at DOT, I find, that, that believes in the project and can work the machinery there because they run on their own schedules and, as you're probably well aware. So we need to get in early and if we had a good project, I think working with the town is, is particularly effective, working with DOT. So if you did know a project on Castle Island Road, I'd, I'd be, you know, happy to work with you in, you know, making the contacts at DOT and it may take the town to really get it off the, the ground, to get their attention and, and get a commitment to do something.
Well, you know, just to be clear, I don't know of a project, but, you know, you know, pushing, if you will, certainly we hope that Anna and others will let us know, you know? So, yeah, all right, well, good. All righty, well, thank you, Charlie. You're certainly welcome to stay on, but I think if we're good, we'll move on to the ordinance review committee.
Anna, thank you and thanks for having me.
Thanks, Charlie. You too.
So Sue, the county ordinance, et cetera. I didn't know if you and Michelle might also just want to give a kind of a quick, kind of interim update of, you know, where the committee's at with a variety of projects as well, if, if you don't mind.
Sure. Amy, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have had three meetings, all via Zoom and we've made a lot of progress. We did finish up a draft fireworks ordinance, which I think was forwarded to all members of the board.
Yep.
In addition to everybody on our committee. And, you know, that's a draft where we're welcoming any comments that you might have. At some point, we're thinking maybe late March, we're gonna do a public hearing on everything that we, we've been able to come up with and that would include fireworks. But if the board has comments in the interim or questions on the fireworks, we'd be happy to, to look at them. We, we've also.
Sue.
Yes.
Would that pretty much ban fireworks at the Camp Laurel?
No, the way the, the ordinance is set up is that it's for consumer fireworks, not to fireworks that are put on by a professional fireworks organization that is licensed or permitted by the State Fire Marshal's Office.
Oh, okay.
So it's my understanding that Camp Laurel and whatever other entities have professional fireworks, people come in and put on firework places that would be permitted through the Fire Marshal's Office at the state level and would not be subject to our regulation. And there's, there's a, I don't have the ordinance right in front of me, but there is a provision in there that accepts.
Okay. So the, the town would be covered too?
Right, so like we had our bicentennial fireworks a year late, but whatever. That, that as a professional.
When the town puts on fireworks, don't we hire some professional to come in and do it?
I'm sure Laurel does.
And they would have to get a permit through the Fire Marshal's Office.
Okay.
I know some of the other camps that I've worked with, I don't know about Laurel, they do not get professionals to come in.
How do they get it done? How do they do it?
They do it on their own. They go out and buy fireworks, which isn't the smartest thing.
I doubt it. I, I would say, I'd almost be sure that Laurel would have.
Well, either way, Laurel's doing it within a, you know, allowable window. They're not doing it 3:00 AM on a Wednesday night, a random night, you know? So, I mean, the, the whole, the whole point of this fireworks ordinance is that it sets, correct me if I'm wrong, Sue and Michelle, that it sets the days, you know, independent day, plus or minus one, New Year's Day, whatever.
Well, especially on lakes.
Yeah. Anyway.
So we can, we can double check that particular issue, but that is my understanding that anything that involves the, a professional fireworks, I forget what they're called, pyrotechnics or something.
Yeah.
A person gets licensed through, permitted through the State Fire Marshal and that is not covered by the ordinance, there's an exception. So I can, I can double check that with the State Fire Marshal's Office, but that's my, that, that was the understanding that we all had and that is also a common provision in the ordinances of other towns that we looked at.
Okay.
So just to be clear, I think Sue was saying that if we had any comments, feed them back to her.
Yeah.
Because they do want to eventually wrap that up for the hearing. All right.
Yeah.
What next?
So, Michelle, did you have anything to add on fireworks? I, oh, I can't hear you. I don't know if anybody else can.
No.
Excuse me, but she shook her head, no.
Oh, there she is.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay, so on the solar farms, we've made a lot of progress and I think the status report as of today is that Michelle and I were able to get a draft done and I circulated that to the committee. And we, our next meeting is this Thursday and we're hoping to have a, a draft finalized, at least a first draft finalized on Thursday at the end of our meeting. And we'll, we'll get that to you folks for your comments and review. We, we looked through, we had Reed Field, we had Monmouth, we had Winslow, we had Manchester. There may have been a few others that we looked at, but the, the ordinance that we came up with, I think is, it's a combination of different provisions, but I think it's mostly based upon Reed Field, which we thought was a very well-done ordinance. And I actually was able to talk to the Chair of the Planning Board in Reed Field, who was primarily responsible for putting it together and got some really good information from him. They do have a proposal in Reed Field, which I think has been either approved or is almost, almost at the approval stage, which I think that proposal came in right when they were working on the ordinance. Because one of the things I wanted to talk to him about was, was the issue that I think we're here on tonight, which is, should there be a moratorium while we're finalizing this? And Reed Field decided not to do one, but he said in the end, what they ended up with for a final proposal and what was ultimately either granted finally or preliminarily was pretty close to what the ordinance would have required anyway. And, and basically he said it was a very collaborative process with the solar farm entity. So, but many of the other towns have imposed moratorium. I think I've sent that information to you folks. A lot, almost every day I, I open up the paper and another town has done one, I think. Allean is the most recent one. I think Belgrade has one. There's just, there's just a lot of, I think, movement in this area. This is a very like up-and-coming area. There are a lot of applications, there's a lot of interest in solar farms. And Paul, I just want you to know that as a committee, I think without exception, we all support it. But we just want to make sure that we have the appropriate protections, particularly around siting, where, where are the appropriate places, are there places where we shouldn't have them, screening, fencing, safety, security, decommissioning, all the things I think, that we all think are, are reasonable. But Michelle, I don't know if you have anything else to add on that, but I think, you know, our committee is supportive of solar power.
Yeah, and I, I would, I would second that. You know, the reason why in our discussions we did talk about a moratorium really goes back to the debacle with the South House application that came in before the town of Mount Vernon had an ordinance and the problems that it caused at the town level, which I'm sure all of you can remember. So, so we just thought that because our work, I mean, clearly it's, it takes time to go through this and we've gone fairly quickly, but we're not done yet. And once the draft happens, I'm sure there'll be input for some changes and then there'll be a public hearing, which probably could result in some additional changes leading up to town meeting in June. So if, you know, if the board were interested in considering a moratorium, it, I believe it can't, can't exceed six months anyway, it could be something up, you know, a max month or when the town of Mount Vernon has an approved ordinance in place. Just to avoid a problem, just to avoid a problem with an application that comes in that isn't compliant like Reed Field's was, just to reduce headache for the Select Board, really, and the town. So that's my.
Right now, if an application came in for a big solar farm in Melverson, every panel would have to be considered a structure. So it would be a huge structure in the middle of a field and, and the, it, it wouldn't be possible. So our, our site plan review right now isn't, isn't feasible for putting in a solar farm, not until we get the ordinance in. And then, and then they can come into town and put a solar, because then at that point, it, they'll have all the, what they'll need. But right now, each panel has to be considered a structure. And so it would be, this is talking with Bill.
They'd have to have 10,000.
Yeah.
Applications.
You, no, no, it would have to be, you, you would be limiting yourself, like if you had an acre.
Yeah.
And each, once you start adding up your acreage, your, your struc, your, each cell.
Yeah.
Your structures, you, you wouldn't be able to use your land, you know, equitably.
So you're saying that Bill says that under the existing ordinance, each individual panel with, you know, placed it into the grass.
Yeah, then you start adding all those areas.
Sue, just separate from the question of moratorium, Sue. Draft that you're working on, you know, clear, kind of specify, you know, how, how to define, you know, each panel, whatever subset, it isn't construed with being a structure under the full, you know, ordinance of the solar power. Wanna make sure that you.
No, we didn't, I, I, I don't think so. I think, um, a so.
You don't have to.
The way we defined it is a solar energy system is the whole project.
Right.
And we have small scale, medium scale, and large scale.
Right.
And those are defined in terms of how many acres or how many square feet they contain, so it's aggregated, it's aggregated.
Okay, so that the way the solar installation is described in the new ordinance that we, that we will adopt at some point.
Yes.
Is prohibited from being construed with, oh, is that a structure?
Right, right.
So, so I think what, um, I, if I'm understanding what, what Bob just said, I think there is an argument that under our current ordinance, um, since solar arrays or solar farms or solar energy systems, um, are not specifically, uh, allowed. They're, they're not expressly mentioned one way or the other.
Right.
In the rural district, which is most of the town.
Right.
That they're not allowed.
Correct.
Um, on the other hand, there is another provision in the rural district section that allows for, I think it's like public utility installations or something like that. And someone could argue that that's what this is, and that doesn't have the, um, 1,600 square feet, um, limitation.
Right.
That other types of commercial, um, or industrial, um, facilities have in the rural zone. So I think it would be arguable. Someone could make the argument that they are allowed in the rural district. And then the other thing is in our growth zones, you know, the two growth zones that we have on report one, there are no regulations.
Right, those aren't big enough.
There are no performance standards. So I think that argument that I just made wouldn't hold up in those two areas.
Right.
So, um, but, but I think one way or the other, we need to have specifically, um, uh, regulations that are specifically, uh, directed towards these types of facilities, cause we, we kind of have.
Right.
There's a void there, just like we had with the cell towers and the wind turbines.
Right, I agree.
Well, I certainly like where we're heading with this. Um, my, my concern personally is I really don't wanna call a special town meeting. We don't, we don't have any place to do it at the moment. I'm willing, personally, I'm always speaking for me, I'm willing to take that four-months chance here. That somebody doesn't do a wildly crazy solar farm that is outside the norm, but I don't know. What do you guys think?
How was Reed Field, um, how was Reed Field feeling about the decision to not do a moratorium? Sue, did you get an idea?
From what I gathered, um, from talking with, um, his name was Henry Cla, Claussen, and I believe he's the chair of the planning board. Um, and I think he's also an engineer, at least that's my understanding. He said that it, it ended up being, um, a collaborative process so that he thought it was, it, it ended up in a good place, I guess is, is something. So I didn't, I didn't ask the question exactly the way you did, Anna, but it seemed like they were able to work together and come out at a place basically where they would have ended up had they had a moratorium.
Okay.
He said right now, the holdup in actually getting it built, I guess, is the, is CMP and the infrastructure that CMP needs to have.
Yeah.
In other words, it's, I, I don't know if it's a substation or some sort of a
Yeah.
structure to accept
Right.
the energy that's bound to be produced.
That's our problem too.
Yeah, we're at the end of the line.
Yeah, it's our, it's, it's more of a problem in Mount Vernon than Reed Field.
Right, yeah, I, I really personally don't see a solar farm coming here at all, cause the power is so inadequate.
All I can say is, um, if you look at the, the maps, um, where the three-phase power is.
Yeah.
Um.
Forty-one and down.
Mount Vernon isn't that different than Reed Field in terms of that, but these, I, I didn't, I didn't really understand what the substation, um, the substation is something different, and apparently depending upon how big a facility it is.
Yeah.
You may or may not need one of those, but the big, large-scale ones need, um, these substations to actually take the power and then
Right.
transmit it.
It's to get the voltage higher.
Reed Field one, is that the one on Ma, the old Mesa's farm that's going in?
Oh, no, I didn't ask him where it was, but he told me it's pretty big.
Yeah.
Really?
It's like 200 acres. Do you know where the farm stand is?
Yeah.
Behind there, like 150 acres or whatever. That's what I guess, that's where it's gonna go. Um, so, so, so the question on the table really is, you know, do we wanna try to hold a special town meeting?
For a moratorium.
Or do we wanna wait for four months to pass to?
I would say wait. Wait till town meeting.
Wait till town meeting?
Anna, what do you think?
Um, I feel, how do I feel? I feel, uh, I feel fairly neutrally. I think I'm inclined to wait. I still, uh, and my hesitation is if, I really, I like to go with whoever's working, um, the most on an issue. So if the ordinance review committee is very concerned, then I wanna take that into account, I guess.
Um, yeah. We're split. Paul's gonna have to decide.
Seems like I'll know. Well, I, I really, you know, whether it's a moratorium on anything, or whether it's we brought out money off something, I hate to have to call a special town meeting for any reason. On a grid year. I really don't wanna try to do that this year, cause some special town meetings are for, you know, some minor oversight and, you know, we recruit three or four people to show up at this meeting, you know, for the first five minutes of a whole special town meeting. But other subjects, you know, could draw 10, 15, 20, 50 people.
We have to pay, pay the clerk to be there.
And we gotta have the clerk be there. We don't have a place for that right now. I don't know what else to say. The community center's closed, the school's not gonna lock them up during school year. Uh, we can only hold town meeting there last year because it happened the day after school closed. And I don't think they're in a different mood as far as COVID and all that, so I'm in no mood to have a special town meeting or something that, you know.
Outside.
I don't see a huge risk here personally. I mean, not, not to, I mean, I'm not disputing the importance of all this, and I'm really looking forward to this new ordinance, so we can support, you know, in a sane way. You know, if not encouraged, by the way, for factory reasons, a solar farm, but, uh, I don't, I don't, I'm not worried about it, like the.
Yeah, if you're going the way of Reed Field, I had someone that works in the solar business, and he looked at it, the Reed Field one, and he thought it was pretty good, so. If you're going that direction, you, you should be doing well.
Let me ask you this, Sue. Have you heard anything about any of the commercial solar farm players, you know, in name that, I mean, is there any of them that have a, like a bad reputation for doing really terrible things when they can get away with it, or do they kinda conform to, you know?
I haven't, I haven't heard one way or the other. And I, the only thing that I heard is what I heard from the planning board chair today, which sounded pretty positive. Um, so I don't know. I, I don't know how to answer that. I thought you were gonna ask me if I had heard if there was anyone interested in developing one in Mount Vernon, and I haven't heard that either, but I wouldn't necessarily hear about it even if it were happening, cause I'm just not in the, in the loop.
Right.
Well, Bill would know if something was happening, so, and he hasn't said anything.
Yeah. Uh, did you ask, Bob, have you talked to Bill about this?
No.
About the moratoriums?
No, no.
No, that was just a related comment.
Yeah.
Well, Bill's in tomorrow, we could do, if he has any opinion on it too, but.
That's true, we're not buying.
Yeah. But I just, I really just don't wanna try to organize a special town meeting.
Yeah.
That's all. I don't know. So what are we doing? A no decision?
No decision.
Uh, Sue, Sue, are you looking for an official decision or a vote by this board tonight?
No, no, no. I wasn't looking for a decision even right now. I mean, we just wanted to put it, thi- this seems to me to be really a board decision, not an ordinance review committee decision.
Right.
Um, but we just wanted to put it on, put it on your radar.
Yeah.
So as Michelle said, so that we, we don't end up in, at least, you know, knowingly end up in a situation like we had with the cell tower where we had an application come in before we had an ordinance.
Right.
Um, and, you know, that just ended up procedurally being really difficult.
Yeah. Um, are there other, uh, topics that you guys wanna update us on as far as the work you guys are doing, or that you're?
I don't think so. I mean, I just, I did just wanna clarify, you know, what our approach had been, and, um, you know, that we're not trying to ban them or keep them out of town, and we don't have any preconceived notions of, like that. Um, the moratorium was only, that, that issue was only brought up to give us time to get the ordinance in and put before town meeting, not to keep them out of town permanently. That, that was really the only message, and, and if you had any other questions, we can answer those to the best of our ability, but no, I didn't really have anything else. And like I said, as soon as we, we vet it, we, we go, circulate it. Um, and hopefully that'll be Thursday.
I'm excited, thank you.
And you're welcome to, you're welcome to attend. We had followed our last meeting and we didn't have technical difficulties that, that meeting.
Wow, that's impressive.
Sue, I just wanted to mention, I talked with Sue this morning, um, Paul, what I'm gonna do is when Alice gets back, um, I've made comments on what she has done so far. And what we'll do is we'll get a copy over to Sue of what has gone by, and then Sue's committee.
Wait, what's the topic?
On the, oh, the ordinance.
Land use.
Yeah, land use ordinance. Sue has been waiting for us to make some sort of a comment back to her on that.
Yeah, I think I forgot to tell you, Sue, after I talked to Alice.
Right, so we're gonna, we're gonna clean it up.
Yeah.
What Alice has been working on, get a copy ready and send it over to the committee.
So did you, did you already tell Sue about the dot, dot, dot thing?
Yes, we're gonna combine those, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Now, Sue, if you need help, I'm willing to help on that. You know, she wants to get like several people together and go through it to make sure everything.
A little.
Yeah, word for word and all that stuff, so. Well, I'll get that over to you sometime after Alice gets back.
We'll, uh, we'll look at the fee schedule too before, it doesn't have to be voted on, but we might as well, if we're gonna update it as well. I think Bill does have a few things he recommends, so we'll, we'll try to update the fee schedule.
Right.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Awesome. Well, thank you guys. Appreciate it.
All right, so, so are we dismissed?
Yep.
Thank you. You're certainly welcome to stay. This is a public meeting.
Thank you very much for your work.
I'm gonna sign off. Thank you guys.
Uh, thank you.
Glad you can hear us.
So I put a placeholder for broadband update and, I don't know, I guess we need to bill. Oh, wait. No, Bill's probably there, okay.
This was just put in there today, so.
I didn't think we went to the mail.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to look at the mail while Alice is not around.
I saw Rachel put it in there, and I was like, mm.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right, so we did get the invoice for that red zone propagation analysis at, at the discounted price. Individual town was gonna be $5,000, but if the whole, um, coalition went in on it, it's only $2,000. So this is something we already talked about last week. Um, but I'll just say separately that, um, I think where they're at is that the whole coalition is pursuing this, uh, potential red zone thing, but that nobody's at all get, working or committing to them, but I think the feeling is, well, we'd like to see it work, you know, cause they're promising, you know, very high speed into every nook and cranny of the town, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the committee had, I attended another one of their meetings last week, where they, that, this company, Matrix, was another one of the, uh, fiber, you know, kind of providers, so that the committee's doing an incredible job. The research that they're doing is phenomenal, the level of detail. But, um, they're just hopeful that they can come up with a final recommendation so that we can write a warrant article and budget for it in time. Um, so it's kind of a race against the clock right now. Um, so, and meanwhile, Spectrum has come back. I don't know if you guys recall, but Spectrum initially made this offer that
Yep.
the town would pay for every resident of the town to have internet.
Yep.
We, the town would get a single bill. The town then collects $30 a month from each person.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Uh, so that was like, eh, so now they've come back with a different offer, and I think it has something to do with people that are not served at all, get fiber at home, boom. Everybody else just gets what they have now.
Oh gee.
So it's just, there's all these different angles, they're, they're coming out of from different directions. Um, there's a lot of people that still are very into, more interested in fiber, but the challenge there is it's just really expensive to run every nook and cranny of the town.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Weston Road would be.
Uh, yeah, I mean.
That would be a problem.
A fortune for us, but I think at the last meeting, um, weren't they saying too, there are just challenges with getting the materials right now, and there's a timeline for fiber?
Yeah, I mean, the fact of the matter is if, if any town, you know, around you voted a town meeting in March or June or whatever to do fiber at home, you know, we're not talking about using it for a couple of years, a year or two, whatever. Um, you know, between materials and bills and.
And getting bonds.
And, and, yeah, and, and many of the towns that have done this, um, the private companies are not investing in them. They're looking for municipal investment. So the way that it typically works is the town will get a bond for $2 million bucks or whatever, $5 million, whatever. Somebody will be hired to run fiber at every house in town, whether, you know, wherever that is. Then a company will be hired to administer the network, keep it all going. And another company will be hired to be the internet provider over that network. Or, you know, even if it's a municipal-owned network completely, there's still a third party that runs it, a third party that does the billing, and, you know, it's not that Carrie making up the bills for your internet.
I just got through 10:99 too.
So, so anyway, they're still sorting through all this, and, you know, do things keep coming up all the time, so.
It seems to me that especially in an area like Bienna, who is so underserved, this red zone is just, if they can do close to what they're saying.
Yeah.
This is the incredible way to go.
I'm, I'm pretty impressed with it. However, I'm also very familiar with their current product.
And it's not.
Well, it's not that it's not, uh, it, they have some, they have different set of challenges, I'll leave it at that. Um, but the new product that they're coming out with is a whole different thing. The current product is 4G, so it's similar to having like a Verizon hotspot or MZ. It's similar to that technology. This new technology is running at a broadband, at a frequency, radio frequency, whatever, that penetrates through trees. penetrates through trees and through walls a lot better. So in other words, everybody knows they have a cellphone and if you're in a tricky spot, go to the, you know, certain bedroom on the second floor.
Quiet hole.
Quiet hole.
So this red zone technology that they've acquired, it's going, going to penetrate trees and structures better. So therefore, uh, each tower will hit, hit more people. That, that's kind of the premise of it all, so. But nobody's seen it yet. The places that have it running tend to be in the Midwest where it's like wide open.
Right.
Yeah, flat, flat.
So people have a little bit of skepticism, so.
Yeah.
You know, the committee, but the committee is playing along because there is a realization that it would be the quickest way to get broadband, anybody and everybody.
And the most, the most expedient too for like a, uh, Bienna.
Right, yeah, for Bienna especially.
Yeah.
So anyways, yeah, they're, they're still hard at work, but they're hoping, I suggested to, um, the committee that they really need to have a draft article by, you know, mid-April.
Yep.
You know, a draft budget by mid-April, you know, we have to be done by, you know, May sometimes. I mean, sometimes we're down to the wire where there's not a day to spare to get the town report for it.
Right.
Uh, but we don't want to be down to that wire as soon as we can help it, you know? So I suggested mid-April would be a good target.
Did the select board set a tone for, uh, the departments, like what, two years ago it was hold, hold as flat as you can?
Well, you know, we haven't actually sent out those letters yet, we probably should.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we're getting close.
I don't know if we have to say that every year. I mean, when is this, when is the select board ever says, hey, go crazy with the budget? Because they're all taxpayers too. So anyways, the broadband committee is busy.
Yeah.
They're doing a good job, so.
Is this gonna give them a test? Is that what that's gonna do?
So this, this is the Mount Vernon's share of the five pound or six pound.
Topographical analysis?
Okay.
No, no, this isn't the full analysis.
No, the topographical, that's not this?
No.
Oh.
Well, no, this is the thing where, uh, they have, they, this kind of mapping technology, they have all the terrain, everything, tree coverage. And they're gonna feed in every address, every address that we have, you know, the other town, into their system and it'll spit out an analysis of what is served at this tower, that tower, that tower, and where might they need some of that. They have these little towers they can erect to fill in some blind spots.
Yeah, so it's a topographical.
Yeah.
I know, that's what I thought. So this is the topographical.
Topographical, I'm sorry.
So they dropped it down from that?
Yeah.
Wow.
If it was only us, it would be five thousand, but the coalition agreed collectively to engage them.
Wow.
So they're only charging ten thousand total. So there's five towns left that haven't done anything yet.
Wow.
So, and you know, even Reseal is doing this because, at my understanding, and they just, you know, they just.
They just, yeah.
You know, to do a five million dollar bond for fiber. But they're all like, oh, hmm, maybe this is worth looking at, maybe we're not supposed to spend five million.
Yeah.
And Reseal, incidentally, they have extremely high broadband rate already. They're already like ninety something percent.
Oh wow, pretty good.
Wow.
So, you know, it would be nice to have fiber, but there's a lot of people that it'd be nice to have anything, so it might, they might end up being compromised.
It's really high because we got like quiet harbor road, you gotta drive almost a mile before you get, you get a lot of people once you get there.
Yeah, that's true.
And that's a lot of these roads, that's the problem.
Yeah, those clusters.
To get those clusters, you gotta go, and that's.
There's a big, there's a big spot in your road.
Yeah, there's, I'm the little campsite here, but until then.
No, but even before you get there, it's a, it's a long drive before the big houses.
Yeah, I'm the first one and it's like quarter of a mile down.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah. Alright, so anyways, uh, hopefully I did justice to the broadband update.
Thank you.
Other business, a couple of things. Um, I emailed, uh, Tom Carey, equal lawyer from, uh, Bienna that, uh, him recommended to us, let's say it that way, uh, to see if he might be interested in speaking to us about being a town attorney, so I'm waiting to hear back. I suggested to him, you know, sometime in the next month or whatever. Well, first I suggested two fourteen, I'm like, well, you know, your wife might not appreciate that. So maybe two twenty-eight, if he's interested. So anyways, I haven't forgotten about that and, you know, we probably, we should be lying to somebody else, I just wanted to mention that. I also want to publicly state to the record that I think that John Curry is doing a great job with the Offroad Cloud, you lead one of his boys, doing a great job with the Offroad Cloud, so thank you to all those guys.
Yep, yep.
Um, there's another kind of random thing that I was thinking about. Last summer, we dealt with a gentleman that knowingly bought a piece of land, lost land behind the elementary school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh.
He talked with me.
Yeah, so I just wanted to remind you guys that he was out there. I think the way we left it with him was that we may be amenable to putting it before the town, but as I recall, the draft that he had his lawyer prepare, you know, it might be more than we want to give up, so to speak. So that it's a topic we should take back up because we did promise him that, uh, that we'd look at. So I just wanted to remind you guys, I don't even recall the guy's name, but it's that landlocked land behind the elementary school I'm talking about.
Well, he could get some land from Julie.
He did?
He could.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know what his other solutions are, or he hasn't pursued them, but all I'm saying is we agree with him that we would consider it. There's nothing that we can do, it'd be a town meeting that would happen.
Right, right.
You know, but just to get it back on our collective radar, you know? I know that there was a draft that he had his lawyer prepare, you know? I, I think at the, at the minimum, it would be something the town would say, alright, well, you can go in there during the winter, harvest is warm, that's it. And at the maximum, it'd be a fancy road for it, you know what I mean? So we had, if we're gonna put anything on the warrant, we'd have to make sure it's the right thing.
Yeah, I don't know how they got out there before. They must have had some agreement with the halls.
Well, I don't think, I think since he bought it knowing it was landlocked, I don't think the guy's been able to do anything with it. I, I think, I think the guy probably walked out there through, you know, anybody can walk across the baseball field and go, look at that.
Well, you, they, it used to belong to Audrey Goucher.
Okay.
And I don't know what, they must have logged it or something.
I don't know, they would have had to have an agreement with somebody.
Yeah.
Anyway, this guy.
They did have an agreement with Paul.
Yeah.
But that was a long time ago, it's been a long time since it was.
This guy, I don't know why he would have bought it without knowing.
Well, I, I'm sure he did know. He, I think he was just hopeful the town would eat him right away, call it good. Anyways, I'm not saying any opinion about it, I'm just saying we talked to the guy and we should remember that it's still a thing that we have to consider. You know, we hope we look at it, that's all. Uh, the other topic I had was, uh, I don't know, uh, I don't know if Mark's actively listening, I'm gonna email Mark, but I, I want to start talking about our audio video and, Mark, if you are listening, um, I was, I was Googling things today and I found this gadget, what's it called?
The owl.
The owl. Mark, if you're listening, Google the owl. It's a, it's a gadget that sits on the table with a three sixty camera, a three sixty audio that, uh, looks like it'd be pretty good. And Andy, you say you have one at work.
Yeah, we do.
And it works well for a meeting like this.
Yeah, especially a smaller group like this, I think it's really effective because they could turn, like Bob was making a point, would kind of know that turn towards Bob, but you could also see everyone else in the room at the same time.
So my, uh, but you know, that's just one possible thing, but in general, I think we need to improve uh, our audio and video, but also make a really consistent experience on YouTube, uh, you know, thing.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we'll continue to use Zoom or whatever, people might want to join that way, but, um, uh, I think, I, I think Mark puts this, Mark streams this stuff now.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And, and there's the recordings of it in YouTube and the link is in the town newsletter.
Right.
And are on the, and or on the town website, you know? But you know, it's kind of iffy as far as the audio goes, between whatever mic we have for Zoom, this thing in the middle of the table, et cetera. So anyways, it's a topic that I want to take up and I'm gonna try to get together with Mark and others that, you know, might have an interest in trying to help solve that.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Yeah. Alrighty, uh.
Just to mention, uh, there's a L D seventeen seventy-two is gonna do something about that remote, uh, meetings. It looks like they're gonna, um, relax the, uh, the rules for, uh, um, allowing people to, to use Zoom.
Oh, that's.
You know, in the state.
Like not make us passive.
Right.
Like we are.
Right, so that we don't have to do.
I think it's also to expand it to, um.
Is that in this?
Well, it would like, if we, if we make a, uh, a policy as a board, it would go to all the other boards in the town, so that they all don't have to do it.
So they wouldn't have to do it.
And it would make it also easier for us, more flexible. So that is, wasn't, isn't quite as rigid as it is right now.
Yeah.
You know, in emergencies. So I would say that this bill would be a good one for us if it goes through.
That's good then.
Yeah.
Do we need to lobby, uh?
Yeah.
Dan and, uh?
Dan and Russell, yeah.
Or do we know, does already opinions form around that?
I don't know if they, they do, but I would think it would be a really good one to push for.
Dan would be a good one to talk to if that happens, for it, you know?
Do you want to pop them a note? I think we all support it.
Yeah.
We do.
Yeah.
Yep.
And you know, I, sometimes if I'm brutally bored or just interested in a topic, I have, I do like watching legislative sessions. Sometimes it's a bit like watching the paintbrush, but when they get, when they get expertise though, you know? Well, let's put it this way, the experts seem like really smart people, maybe some of the other ones. Uh, sometimes people get out of committee, they have no expertise. Uh, I'm not picking on any of our legislation boards, I'm saying.
That's why it's hard to realize that lobbyists really serve a purpose because so many people are on committees trying to do legislation that they have no background or, or you know, realm of experiencing.
Yeah.
So lobbyists are there to kind of educate them.
Yeah, that's true.
Keep them straight?
That's true.
No.
I don't know.
Broaden their experience.
But either way, the legislature does, they're doing all their committee meetings and so forth on Zoom.
Zoom, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Why shouldn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think everybody's getting used to it. Alright, uh, what else do we have?
Um, MMA on March second is gonna do a, um, a Zoom on the, uh, the R P A funds, ARP funds.
ARP fund.
Yeah, that might be something worth checking out.
Oh, and the final rulings, maybe I saw it, you know about that.
Telling us what we can do and what we can't do and all that stuff.
Well, it's been back and forth in the towns about whether it's legal to do the hazard pay.
Right. Oh, yeah.
Back and forth.
Yeah, I'll do that.
No, but.
Have any controversy for us?
No, the two, the two ways that we're gonna do it, I think, and that's another thing, that bridge, we gotta work on that.
Ah, yes.
Wait, I have been talking with Lee back and forth, um, we still don't have the bill for the Cottle Hill one.
Yeah?
No.
What?
We haven't paid Derek for that.
Wow, smokes.
We don't have the bill for it and he's trying to get hold of the guy and.
Well, I have the guy's email, I'll email him, so.
Well, actually, he's supposed to have gotten it to Lee and he just hasn't gotten back to him, so.
Alright, well, Andy did mention this other guy, um, I think, I think that to do with, I owed him some information about what we're gonna do on, on the, on the bigger bridge. I just made a note for myself, I don't forget to do that. Thank you for that reminder.
Yeah, we gotta get engineering going on that so we can go get bids.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to get too late in the season.
So we might end up, that's a good point, we might end up needing to take, you know, fifty grand or whatever worth of the ARP money just to get the engineering done.
Yeah.
So the, the latest thing from the guy from the state was, it has to be built to state's standards. But it's still left to interpret what that really means, right?
So we could be left high and dry, couldn't we?
Well, we could be left without any state funding.
Right. We, we aren't gonna know, when are we gonna know that we're gonna get state funding? Not until we're, it's built or.
They've already quote unquote, air quote, promised us, you know, sixty percent of whatever, as long as it's built to be a D O T spec.
But even more than that, if it's not built to D O T specs and we, we do it, it's their bridge or?
No, it's gonna be our bridge.
Yep.
Okay, it'll be fully our side.
It's their bridge.
They're gonna take, they're gonna take the other one out and it'll be.
Okay, good.
So once the engineering is done, we send it to the state?
That's right.
Okay, so we should know then?
Uh, I, I, I'm, I definitely think we'll get their approval, you know, with a note that says, yes, we're gonna pay the sixty percent in from this design.
Okay.
Now, if we get another design that comes in that's so cheap, which I don't think is gonna happen, but let's say these other guys that Andy thinks is so great.
Yep.
Maybe they're like, oh, we can do that for blah, 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 the state.
Right.
You know? Like, can you do it for a hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-one dollars? By the way, speaking of ARP funding, did we end up getting a tiny bit more?
Oh, yeah, I was wondering about that.
Yeah, it was like four hundred bucks or something. I told you, don't hold it back.
Oh, we did get it though?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, how's things going with the audit?
Um, they've decided they're doing the second piece of it strictly remote, so I have to have a big skiing party again.
With twenty twenty-one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they, have they told you what they need yet?
Yeah, they just sent it to me.
Okay, great. So you'll be eating that this week, next, whatever?
Yeah.
Are you okay hours wise? I know it's a lot of work.
Um, I, I'm not, I, I have hours that I have not been paid for, but it is.
Yeah.
It's okay. That's what it is.
You know, that's something to think about when we do the budget. I don't really mind, for example, that the transfer station, we didn't vote specifically on the max hours for the attendance. And sometimes we hit these, you know, artificial walls because that's the exact number of hours that we voted at town meeting. I don't know what other towns do, but it's nice having a little flexibility if something happens and somebody, it could be the treasurer, it could be the blackboard assistant, it could be anybody in.
Well, I don't think, I don't know how to handle that because it, you want, you want a max in your mind when you're setting the budget. But then it's somehow the wording, because people, I feel that people should know why they're voting an amount. But there's giving kind of a contingency, giving you an ability to, in certain situations, um, be able to, to go past that.
I mean, there always is traditional.
The contingency fund, right?
Yeah, but if.
If you can identify the reason for it.
But then the, the other thing is that for people, I mean, it's very specific, max of uh, twenty thousand for the deputy or something like that, where it's specifically a max. I think you might even have trouble going over that with the contingency.
Well, max on a, on a assistant or a deputy would be the original person, I would say contingency might be able to take over, but not a deputy.
Okay.
Well, anyways, uh, we could all just kind of look at other towns.
Yeah.
You know, warrants are over the town report, of course, just to see what other towns do. I don't even know.
Yeah.
Frankly, so.
Actually, a lot of towns don't put in the specifics of each position.
Right.
But that's one of the things that the auditors really like, that we do.
Yeah.
And, you know, it, it is a good thing and I, I feel very strongly that people should know what they're voting on.
Yeah.
I think someplace else that I suggested that, but they wanted to slap me around.
I think some towns actually put that whole budget sheet right on one. They were probably early months and I was like. I think Tom now that actually put that whole budget sheet right on one, they were probably early months when I was like, go look.
Yeah.
The, the, the con to that is all the time my paper explains something, you know, for a hundred people looking at it.
Well, it, it's like, I'm, I want a more detailed budget than anybody should have to look at.
Right.
But because I feel it gives, gives me a heads up to say, oh, we're running awful tight from, um, on the heating for this building.
Right.
And, uh, what's happening? Do we need, are we gonna run out of money or?
Right.
You know, I, I think that's important, but not important in the big picture to vote on.
Yeah. All right, what else do we have?
Um, Trio?
Oh, yeah, Trio.
Um, Nadine called today, um, and she's supposed to call back tomorrow on some sort of a schedule. So I'll let you guys know what I hear tomorrow.
Okay, cool.
Oh, shoot, and I keep forgetting this. I wanted to ask, um, since we're getting web budgetary, can we get, uh, cloud? Is it cloud?
Well, that, that comes to the next step. You have to go to the web UI first.
Right, so we are.
Yeah, we are, but it, it, it's a much bigger ticket budgetary wise.
Right.
I, I thought the plan was we would put that in the twenty twenty-three budget, do it in July.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
I mean, I don't think, we've got so much going on now, the budget coming up.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
I think they sent a quote, I mean, I agree, I think, I mean, at this point, we're, feel silly to say it, it was a snow pile outside, but it's almost town meeting time, so I think that makes sense for two divisions.
I didn't know how much you were worried about the backup.
Well, I am worried about, but, you know, four months.
Yeah, okay.
I think they sent a quote that it was like two thousand.
Yeah.
So not terrible, really.
It's not terrible, but you're, just keep it in mind.
Well, was that just the one time plus the annual?
Oh, good question. I feel, uh, I don't know if we'll be able to find it.
This is the price, but then, oh, you have to pay this, this and this.
Yeah.
Right, it's, it would be one time plus.
Right.
Yep.
And whether or not the one time covers that first year or one time and every year.
No, it was one time plus like two eighty-five or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there was another fifty for.
All right, so Trio, what else?
Trio. Spirit, Spirit of America, and we decided on that, Spirit of America.
Decided on it, but I emailed you guys a plot on that.
And we, I would go with that.
Yeah, I don't wanna say the name, but I think that, I think that's what we should go with, yeah.
So for the general public, we were noodling around with ideas for the Spirit of America award, but we don't like the good names.
No.
So, you know?
That's it, that's all I got.
Yeah.
That's what we do.
Um, let's see, oh, the only thing I had was to follow up about this, um, university, whatever it's called through MMA. Um, and the gist is basically they're just switching their like back system, however they're hosting that. Um, so I've not signed any of us up, but we can as soon as they've swapped their systems.
Took the time to figure out what that was.
It's just a bunch of like classes they have for folks who use their insurance in case you're interested. But it's like recordings of past things mostly.
Oh, is that what the?
So nothing urgent.
Yeah.
It sounds like no one, uh, no one has been using it very heavily, so.
All right.
That's update.
Well, it's, uh, if you wait half a minute, we can adjourn at eight thirty.
Oh, perfect.
There it is, eight thirty. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we adjourn.
All in fair, ooh, that makes it even. Thank you, everybody, for participating.
My stomach was growling.
Supper time.
Yes.
Okay.
I gotta go check the baby monitor for the broadcast.
Oh, yeah, good luck.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you again for your help today, Carrie.
Oh, sure.
Um, did the drop off go okay?
No.